I see, well, I've looked at the tablet already, it's got all the...
Yeah, well, since now, since now, we've got these, uh, uh, people, uh, so they walk from their house down to get the mail, don't stop at the corner, where they're gonna look, you know, the road is different, so, sidewalk, or the road. And they'll, they'll come right down to those, uh, they're...
It's, it's planned to be.
I'm like, one of them. Subject, I guess, whoever, but, now, they knew when that got there, they didn't have to put it in here, but they put it in. Cause they thought it was a good safety room.
It is a good safety room, it just make the homes cost more bills, you know, they're going, they're going to pass it on.
Yeah, yeah, we know.
Did that, uh... You're saying Troy School? I heard it over there. There's one right here committed, Mayor.
Yeah, that one's better, let's get started. Little bit everywhere, trying to get people that have indicated that they were gonna be with us on the same time to get logged on. Apologize for being a little bit late getting started. Uh, pursuant to Governor Lee's executive order number sixteen, subsequent orders in the Native Limitation Community, spread out by nineteen, our meeting tonight, and the Harps of Trout County Commission will be held as a virtual meeting option. Uh, I believe we have three commissioners.
Yes, sir.
We have a commissioner, Alwood, Booker, and Walsh are all on.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and I believe we have everyone else here, with the exception of Mr. Johnson. Appreciate everybody coming out. We'll have our roll call, uh, we'll approve the minutes from the February twenty-second meeting, if everybody had a chance to look those over, if anybody noticed anything that needs correcting on those minutes. If you do find something, please let us know, so we can have it signed, uh, preferably before the... Pardon? That's right, and the call meeting was on March eight, we have to do that one as well. We have both of those in the package. In announcements, uh, just please remember, uh, Commissioner Richard Johnson, uh, he's, I've talked to him a couple of times recently, he seems to be in really good spirits right now. Uh, they say he's living on his phone about twenty hours a day, and he does appreciate all the phone calls, so if you get a chance, please give him a call. If you don't have his number, forget it, man, I'll be glad to get it to you. Uh, also, Commissioner, uh, Linda Sue Johnson, uh, has moved out of her district, uh, which means she is no longer able to serve, she gave me notification by email, and I have, uh, received that notification and, uh, sent, uh, condolences back, uh, to her for having to, uh, resign from the commission. Uh, what we need to do, we have hundred and twenty days to fill this vacancy, since we don't have an election scheduled, uh, we will go ahead and appoint someone to fill that vacancy. Uh, we will acknowledge this on the minutes of next Monday night's meeting, as, uh, the official, uh, resignation, uh, from her. Then we will make an announcement in the newspaper, uh, I'm sure Chris will do an article on it, plus we have to do an actual notification of it, and ask anyone that's interested in serving as a commissioner, to please contact the mayor's office or myself, and hopefully we will have some people for our meeting next month, and it will be up to us to, uh, select some people that have shown interest. Now, what we intend to do, what I would say, we will give them time to speak, to introduce themselves, to acknowledge if they would like to be considered for this position. And, uh, then, we will, we will vote, basically, uh, on who, hopefully we will have, we may only have one, we may have none. Uh, I don't know, we'll just have to see how it, how it plays out between then and then.
What district was she from?
This is the fifth district, fifth district, Mr., uh, uh... Dickey, Mr. Dickey has done a commission in that district, uh, commissioned in that district, and times passed, and should be referred that district. Uh, Mr. Keating served that district, I served that district before moving to the seventh district. Uh, so, I thi- I think we, it pretty much goes from two thirty-one Rocky Creek up to the south side of Kentville, and then you run into the eighth district, so, pretty good area up in that, that area. And they do need to live in that district, and I believe, Mayor, they had to be a resident for three years of the county.
They have been resident in the county for three years.
Not necessarily that district, but, uh, resident of the county, but you do have to live in that district. Did she stay in the area, what, sir? Did she stay in the area, or did she move out of the area? She moved up to, uh, up in, uh, Jerry and Landon's district, I think, uh, Jerry and... Jerry and Gary Walsh, the, uh, up on Honey Pond, I believe, is where she moved to.
I didn't know she was up there.
Oh, uh, that's kinda, Mayor, do you think that's why you need to handle this, or did I miss anything there?
I have to get a notice in the newspaper, we said a day before the meeting, telling people how they can come, put it in there. And there's some voting requirements that I can send to you in the statute, um, kind of cover that one, it's pretty good as far as everything else. Just wanna make sure you know, under the statute, there's a part of the notes given, but you can wave that notice, you know, called constructive notice, that's Mr. Chairman Jewel giving her, not talking about the, the reservations, uh, if you could, I would ask that you wave actual notice, that you've been given constructive notices, actual notice I have to come from, uh, county court clerk, so, but, I would argue you got constructive notice, I'd ask that you...
Mr. Bell, do you have anything to weigh in on this process?
No, that is, is absolutely correct, on what he's saying.
So y'all go out here and beat the bushes and get us good commission, and you're done.
I got the message.
All right, are there any other announcements, Mayor, if you have any announcements, other than that?
Well, the planning commission, I don't have a name right now, uh, on future voting registration, to kind of see where we're lacking, and sort of representation on the planning commission, go ahead and issue my certain program, have to basically do a reset, I mean, I did get raised on my load of information, so, it looks like we need somebody from the sixth district, so if you know, like, live in the sixth district, I know you need better representation, I mean, we try to spread it across the entire county, but there's around seats in ten districts, so, I'm still trying to get a bunch of representation in the county, if I can get a name, or a name, shoot somebody from the sixth district, that's where I'd like to, uh, make an appointment from.
All right, anything else?
No.
Do you want to make something, do you know anything? Any commissioners, do you have any announcements? All right, we'll move on, uh, amendments to the agenda, the only thing I know of is budget, we had one budget amendment that came through budget finance, and if you look under your item D, budget amendment, one-on-one general fund, add twenty twenty-one dash one-on-one dash twenty-six, and this is, uh, for courtroom communication equipment. It'll be seventy-two thousand dollars. Of course, next week, we will probably have some outreaches that will be added, uh, don't know of any other business that will, will come in right now, of course, we never know, but that's the only addition that I know of to the, uh, to our agenda like that. You can enter our meeting, we'll have citizens respond to the agenda items, as usual, we'll ask them to sign in if they would like to speak to any of the agenda items. The mayor will give us his report, Mayor, do you have anything to report on tonight, or is it...
I'll just do a couple of quick things, just to let you know, we are the lead of a EMS medical director, who we have resigned in April, so, if you know any doctors who know that, give them a touch with the Director Bailey, and he can give you information, and give the, like, paper that you fill out to them. So again, if you know anyone who might want to be interested in serving because our EMS medical director, please reach out to the Director Bailey. Uh, the local parks recreation fund grant, had this contacted by TCA, they have asked us, basically, we would be willing to put in more money, yes, they put in more money, uh, for some safety improvements throughout the entire department, versus just the area, but then, uh, I'm going back and forth with them, we're trying to see exactly what it is that they're thinking, my initial interpretation of what they told us, I don't get any grants, and if they can't, whether or not we can contribute more funds, but at this stage, we're trying to see exactly what they're looking for in the price for it, so, we're working on that right now, and trying to get that middle, and then we'll bring that to the parks and ready, and through the proper channels that we go forward. Uh, as far, the county is also doing a facade grant for the Tennessee Department, Tennessee Department of Economic and Community, well, it's Tennessee downtown program, this is the flood through grant that the commission approved last week in January, it's a fifteen thousand dollars reversible fund statement, for people to do, um, improvements on the outside of the building here in the downtown area, so, windows, doors, lighting, paintings, work on brick, no channel thing, so, we have sent that information out to the property owners and business owners, the initial deadline is March third, dealing to the island and some other issues, uh, I've been at the top of the state, and top of the community that's involved in that, we extended that deadline to March thirtieth, and we have gotten more interest since we extended that deadline, so I think we're gonna get, uh, a pretty good number of applications, it seems like, so hopefully we'll see some more work, uh, as we go through the summer, we've done on the buildings in the downtown area. That's the three major islands, I love the coverage, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I mean, I'm applying for... So far, none have, but I've had about five reach out to them, kind of get some clarification, and I have two that said, yeah, it didn't look like we were gonna get enough that they could put in applications, but they were wanting to make sure those proper, all that change, so, and that grant is also written in the way that if we don't spend any kind of fifteen thousand dollars, we can use it to buy a banner for the streetlights out here, we can break work and walk away in front of courthouse, it's very, very garbless, and have figures to go.
What, what do we spend on the waste? Waste?
Uh, right now, they're hoping to get us some initial number by May first, so we can have that for budget, uh, right now, we are giving feedback to all the employees about what their job responsibilities are, or what they do, and what training and education they have, so right now, we're in that stage, we have to put together a, kind of focused group meeting between ten and twelve, ten employees, for the company doing the waste saving meeting, you know, they will meet with them directly, and I, I won't be in, I'll be in the room, you know, the property, it's the one-on-one, it's open for you, so that's kind of, I should grab right now, so...
Any other questions, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Move on into, uh, committee reports, I'm gonna go over the ones that we know that have been experienced meeting at March second, emergency services met March ninth, prison relating met March eleventh, communications met March eleven, park and rec will meet March eighteen, budget finance met tonight, March fifteenth, the audit committee will meet tomorrow night, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Parks and rec, uh, has scheduled meetings for March eighteen. Just take off a page. Were there any other committees that were missed? Any other committees? All right, well, next, moving into our active business. Uh, Mayor, do you think you'd like, they'd have any appointments, re- appointments, next Monday?
I hope to have a group, one of the housing authority departments, uh, one of them has to be a resident, and the housing authority director is trying to see if she can tie it around, well, sir, if she can, but in the circumstances, she has to submit, they, they're allowing the, the number of public, I did reach out to someone else, had a, expressed interest to see if they were the server, they had a change in job recently, I don't know that they'll still be able to do that, so I reached out to them, and they, and she hasn't, she didn't, that, so, if you have a big value of things, and the service is different, that may be interested in serving on the housing authority board, please have them contact my office.
All right, we'll move into resolutions. First is resolution twenty twenty-one oh eight seven twelve, this is Lynn's litter grant resolution. This is basically an annual thing, if it's not... Any questions on that? I think it's for the deficit planning board, we, I play a man, something to do, for the state money from state litter grant. Next is twenty twenty-one oh nine seven thirteen. This is a resolution requesting state officials to add deep process to the training curriculum at TCAT. Um, I was approached in a meeting by Ranger County that had done a resolution of this type, asking for support from other counties, um, just, one of those support resolutions that we do a lot, since we have a deep process in plan here now, and a lot of counties do, there's, uh, I think, in talking with Jason, there's a lot of shortage for qualified people to work in this industry. So this is simply asking the, uh, TCAT and the board governors to, uh, possibly look into adding this to their curriculum. Next is resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten seven fourteen. Uh, this is a resolution opposing proposed state legislation to modify the healthcare facilities to fit specific need requirements, and to oppose allowing the health services and development agencies to expire. Mayor, I'll let you expand on this one, I know that in the, uh, Tennessee, County Commissioners Association meeting, we voted to oppose this request.
Basically, it's been, well, it was basically put in place by Congress, I live in nineteen seventy-five, when they put some regulations on hospitals, basically, it's the, like, saying, somebody else will open up another hospital, build a travel account, a travel medical center, to the last point, to the post that, that just got in the body, you can keep out anybody that want to come in, and that goes to other services, it can be X-rays, cat scans, all kind of things, if we're already provided there, they say that there's not even, in the community, basically, this is a teaching need program, uh, it is generally opposed by hospital associations, particularly rural hospitals, they didn't have, they're, have to treat, anybody comes in the door, we say that pays as them, in the unfair circumstance, you have somebody else that's open enough, and among the two people who can pay. So that's why they're asking for this to be, uh, this resolution to be passed, and it was passed in Southern County, so this is based on what they sent in from Southern County, I passed it on Chairman Jewel, they're also trying to get the same thing passed in Smith County, and so, like I said, I passed it on Mr. Jewel, brought it to the commission for your consideration.
Any questions on that? Strictly support resolutions. Okay, I think that finishes resolutions, we'll get into ordinances, several ordinance is on first reading. First one is two eleven twenty-one oh two, this is an ordinance from Minnesota Trout County, done a resolution to add sidewalk requirements, this came out of planning commission, from the planning commission, it was recommended by them on, uh, March eighth. Sam, would you like to explain this to us a little bit, uh, you may need to come down here and get the microphone.
Do you want me to explain, by the way, I'm standing here?
Let's do the first one first.
So the sidewalks that were proposed, um, basically, all new subdivisions that are creating, uh, their own roads in the subdivision, will be required to have, uh, pedestrian walkways to go through them, to provide areas for people to walk and ride bikes. Um, there are specifications like, uh, pedestrian walkway to have to be five feet wide with a two-foot grass strip. Now, there are certain things that change that, to see on the notes, uh, collectors of public ways will increase it, and our area of public ways will increase it. Um, but basically, this is to provide these new subdivisions that are popping up, uh, the people that buy in them have areas where they can walk and get around, get to the centralized postal boxes, uh, to travel in between their houses and postal box. We get G and R C, right, uh, it's our, their recommendation, based on the other counties, this is their recommendation for our county.
And the second part of that section too, is on the cluster residential, uh, you know, boxes, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, so, uh, postal services require close to, uh, closer mailboxes for all, all subdivisions. Uh, any subdivision, like, that's for, will have to have close to mailbox, provide mail services to them, so the postal service will not have to travel, uh, through these new subdivisions, it's postal box, it'll drop off all mail, it's not just county thing, it's, uh, it's postal service wide, and so, because these postal mailboxes are, uh, now required, the postal service has sent out directions on how to install them, size, all that stuff, we're just adding that to our, uh, that's to match them. Um, we are leaving it a little broad in case the rules do change, um, it directs the builders to contact the postal service and find out, basically, is there, what they're requiring at that time. So we're trying to add that to our, it is a requirement for anybody, that's what we're trying to do, so... There is, we did add a section on there for all these subdivisions, uh, there will be a requirement for those, uh, postal boxes to be put on their own piece of property, that will be maintained by H O S, so, for example, if a car pulls in and runs out a postal box, we've got, potentially, we've got one coming up in forty-eight hours, who's gonna pay for this? Who's gonna replace that postal box for country as well? They will have a small H O S, but with just that postal box, um, and this, this postal box will be on its own property, won't have any of the, uh, normal setback restrictions that we have for other units, it'll be on standalone, non-visible lot. So, we did add that.
This has been an issue recently to come up, uh, where the postal service is not letting us put a box at each house in the neighborhood, and where they will put it, and how people are gonna get to them, and where they're gonna park their car to stop to get to the box, and, and this addresses those things. Ms. Baker, Mr. Mallor, planning, do y'all want to add anything to what Sam said?
Um, of course.
Good morning, that's gorgeous.
I mean, you, you, uh, put a sidewalk in, nothing was, you know, like, if I were to check, then you put a sidewalk, and that law, you have to be, right?
So, the way it's set up is, each postal box will, it hints at how many units are in that subdivision.
Oh, wow.
Uh, there is a chart, uh, you should have noted that, there is a chart, but, if fifty or less, will have to have two parking licenses for that postal box. So, if sidewalk goes in front of the postal box, it should be on some of these properties, which means the use of this, on the other side of the walking area, it would be cut in a tiny little square, um, they'll be able to get out of their cars, go to the postal box on the walking area, get their mail, and get back to the form, but if fifty or less, will have to have two parking licenses, and then it goes up in there.
Do you want to have questions?
This is also, also, a safety, because a lot of people want to walk, and they want to walk for exercise, so they'll walk down, and face just walking out in the middle of the road, they'll have a five eighty-eight sidewalk there for them to walk on, for, for safety, bar to walk down, and get their mail, and walk back.
I will say, my experience from other jurisdictions, other county cities, this is pretty much required, we're a little bit behind the times, not the point.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard, uh, that's why, as G and R C do, go through the other counties and come up with their recommendations for us, so, this is pretty standard for other counties, and it's found, uh, we're being required to, or centralized postal boxes on these new subdivisions, uh, the sidewalks will have access to those postal boxes.
First reading, uh, next month, if it passes first reading, it will be up for a public hearing, and second reading, reports enacted. Uh, I would urge any of you that still have questions about it, or concerns about it, to give to Sam, or any of the commissioners that are on the planning commission, or their chairman, and, uh, see if you can get your questions answered.
I got one more.
Yes?
I have, and it, it varies depending on the plan, but generally, uh, they trust me to get, in their best interest, it needs to be... It needs to be towards the front of the property so they don't have to pull in very far. And the way we've been planning it in the last couple of plans is, it's actually the box is set before you even pull in to these subdivisions, so they can just swing through and get back on the network, so.
And the most common unit, and it's just, when you get closer, that's ungrounded, but when it comes to mailbox on the third, it should be covered to the third.
So there's no longer any new subdivision, if you haven't come in with a plan for a new subdivision, you are no longer allowed to use a regular mailbox. It has to be a cluster, if you have a plan, it has to be a cluster mailbox.
Commissioners online, make sure that you're at, y'all have any questions on this?
I do not.
No, sir.
Just didn't want you to be neglected.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In looking at the diagram here, we've got drawn course, when, when the county were to adopt the drive, the roadway that people built, two years ago. Is the county adopting those sidewalks as well?
I don't think that caught all of that, I read it out there.
We're saying if we build a road into a subdivision, the county built the county standards after so many years. The county adopted as far as the maintain, maintaining that road, would we be adopting these sidewalks as well?
That is a good question.
Is that a question, Mr. Goer?
Yes, sir. And that was brought up. It was also brought up that it would eventually be falling into that HOA agreement with the CDU mailboxes to maintain their, it really depends on does it fall into the easement or into subdivision. So the sidewalks, I guess. So if it does fall within the road access and it kind of does take it over, then yes, it kind of will be taken over the sidewalks.
So the termination area is out on the easement, is it?
If, if it belongs to the road itself, then yes, it will belong to us.
Any other questions? That's fine.
Possibly what will be the cost of the sidewalk at four plus a hundred fifty foot road?
I don't think it costs much, the sidewalks are costly. And if there's somebody who, who would have. I will, I will ask Brad to give another.
You know what size houses are?
What size houses? Where?
And then those subdivisions you talked about.
Right now, currently, I have seen a house below fifteen hundred square feet. So it's going to be fifteen hundred square feet or larger. So, did I ask any questions?
Does that a mandated policy or does that a suggestion about sidewalk being a priority?
So we've already adopted regulations, this is changing our patent requirements. It is a recommendation, so y'all should
Want to know the place that HOA is, that's it. It was neighbor country. Or however.
Sidewalks? The HOA that I was saying everything's with that are boundaries of subdivision.
How old is that subdivision?
I think right now it's pulling its eighteen years. It was a gal.
Does Galton have some policy of adopting roads?
They have a similar one for the, of the road, yes.
One thing that this is going to require is an HOA, most of your subdivisions do not have an HOA in place. They're individual property owners, but you do not have homeowners association form. So this is something that there's a lot of nuances, I guess you'd say, a lot of what ifs that need to be explored. And I think we need to make sure that we have all of our branches before we like, say this fold.
Yes, so that, that, there is exceptions on the climbing strap, but yes, that is proposed in there. For certain criteria, there will be a two foot stage strip between the curb and the sidewalk itself.
Is that going to be the format that y'all are wanting to use?
If, if you read through that, it's going to be probably ninety percent of the time, that's what's going to happen.
Chairman. They didn't have going home. They went ahead and added it to there, they didn't have to, but they went ahead and added it to it. This is all about safety, it's not necessarily about freedom, it's about safety.
That subdivision on South College, that sidewalk was not required, but he put it in place. And I think everybody needs to keep in mind, this is going to be on new subdivisions. When a new subdivision comes in, they are required to have a cluster mailbox. And I just think it's good planning, you need to provide a safe way for those people in that subdivision to get to that cluster mailbox. And it's going to, it'll improve the look and the safety, I mean, you're going to have people walking. Instead of walking in the street, why not have them on a sidewalk for their sake? It just makes sense, if you go to some, some of the other, you know, newer subdivisions that they almost all, you know.
Just for
What I see with the planting strip sort of bothers me because what I see there, you'll have some people have it neat. And the others, you'll have weeds about this high, don't care. I'd have a little bit of thought about that planting strip. If everybody done that, it'd be great, but they ain't going to.
So
I can understand, if you're in an HOA, you're not supposed to, they don't measure, they go beyond that, they start finding them.
Yeah.
So, so like, at the, the normal HOA policy, it's got to cover all your bushes in your subdivision. So your bushes are trees, always better stuff that you have, including the planting strip. It's going to be covered under the HOA, so the bush dies, it will get replaced. So that way it does not deteriorate.
What happens if they choose not to have a HOA in the subdivision?
That will not be an option, it will be in their D, they will have an HOA for that subdivision.
Then they will go to, they will, they will put the yard, whatever you're putting, the box there, they don't, you'll play. Just know this, HOA are not all created equal. Some will charge you a fee throughout the whole year, you pay for that time. Some, if you can act about hiring them, so there's a lot of flexibility. So don't put every, buy three HOA in the same box, but some are much more lenient, cover much less than others. Of course, the more that the HOA has to be responsible for, flower boxes and then the sidewalk, the higher the price goes. So, you know, that's something you need to think about, I'm kind of sitting on the fence about I'm not too much have a problem with road, and now the sidewalks, a price that high for a day, a hundred forty-two dollars a per foot square. So, you know, those things, they, the splits, and we are not in here yet, we need to know that we're funding, what do you expect later?
A lot of our contractors is going to be concerned about this, and yes.
There you go. You go in any other county, going to a new subdivision now, got pretty sidewalks, makes subdivision much purtier than one about it.
But what about subdivisions way out on the ends of the county? Well, that's, that's what we're looking at here, we have two separate ordinances, one concern partial urban services. The other one is in the county, they're mirrors of each other, they're basically the exact same thing, but since we still have those two ordinances separated, that's why you have two ordinances. Technically, you could pass this for the city and urban services, but not pass it for the county. You have that, that option as well, that's, the first one was county, next one, twenty twenty-one oh four, is the city. So if I've got that right, am I right on that, Sam, or am I got it backwards?
You are, the county has accepted.
Row three, I guess, would be the county. The series one for the county. I think we all need to do our homework on it, ask for questions, get with Sam, get with each other. Not decide what you're going to do, get the information you need to know what to do when it comes to votes. Yes, sir.
Can we get Sam or somebody to get, Mr. Shrod, and see what the right of way on the road is?
Well, the right ways, the road right ways are written into the subdivision regulations now, when they're developed to this sort of a plan.
But the right ways, if you're down to take care of
On an existing roadway? It varies depending on what type of road road is.
That's what I'm saying, if the sidewalk is going to be three foot maybe off of the pavement. You guys will follow on the right of way of that road. More than that.
I see what you're asking. And I would say it would vary depending on which road, what, I mean, some road right ways are fifty foot and some are only forty foot, some are a hundred. Some counties now are requiring two hundred feet for road right ways, so that you have right ways for utilities and sidewalks and bypass and pretty little bushes. They just pass two hundred feet on subdivision right ways, and Murray County last month. So, you know, that's a separate issue from whether or not you're going to require a sidewalk. But I can see how it goes together, how long it will affect you.
If, if damn in the future, like we just, county just took over two courts down here, they think if they take over these subdivision, the sidewalk is going to fall in, in the right of way of that road. So that will make the county responsible for them unless HOA is going to do it.
So here's, here's the answer, the four dash one oh eight point one sidewalks along new streets in the county. Sidewalks shall be required along all streets constructed in all subdivisions excluding alleys and those streets proposed in industrial use. Sidewalks may not be required along the rural streets when all lots fronting substreet are forty thousand square feet or larger in size and have average road range of a hundred fifty feet or more. So when you're out in the county, one of these subdivisions out in the county, it may not be required.
Forty thousand square feet, roughly a one acre lot. And a hundred fifty foot is typical county lot, hundred fifty to two hundred feet is very typical on some of those subdivisions. So with that, may or may not at the discretion of the planning commission.
That's their discretion, not that, sort of.
That's the way I read it, that's the way you
At the discretion of the planning commission, based off of the layout, geography, where it's located, you know, these mental units.
Talking about those planners one more time, who's going to, who's going to care for them? Because if they're out right next to the pavement and you walks over here, that's going to be up to the county to take care of that. Not the homeowner, because they don't own it.
Most, most places, what if this is your yard, you've got this strip in front of your sidewalk, you mow it when you mow your yard. That's typical, some homeowners associations, if they're mowing the yard, they're mowing, but that would depend on, there's too many circumstances there.
It depends on how it's written, if they're required a bench, bench facing barrier or they're required this bench facing strip. Then it will be, it will be written into the HOA policy to maintain a certain number of bushes, certain number of trees, certain number of whatever side.
Okay, I think we could talk about this for three more hours and not really come up with any firm decisions. I think it's something we all need to take and do our own homework and ask questions to ones that know and have already been down this. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you more questions?
Sure.
Where did, where did this come from? Did it come from the planning mission or did it come from contractors who opened that, that sidewalk?
Planning mission. A plan.
I, I urge all y'all to read through this thoroughly, do bullet points on your questions, send them to me so that I can thoroughly give you all their answers. It's hard to give you all all the specifics. Maybe ninety hours out on the slot right here, but if you give me bullet points, I'll give you the answers to each of your questions.
Her, her question specifically was where did this originate? With the planning commission, with you, with a contractor asking for it, where did it originate?
It didn't respond with, we had multiple subjects.
I know where it come from.
So if we start now, give it a vote, and all the new subdivisions that are coming forward will be required to do that. Or have an exception depending on where it's from. So we, we missed two already. While this is made in progress, because we have, we had posted for thirty days in advance before we even discussed it. So we're trying to get evidence.
What two would those be?
The two subdivisions, the, the one that's right that category, and then what I'm talking about, which is South College, when they would have had a sidewalk to get to the postal boxes.
Let's move on, if that's agreeable with everyone. Because we have those, those ordinances that we just discussed. We need the budget amendments. All our budget amendments, none of them tap into our fund balance, they're all moving monies from one line item to another. They were all approved and sent forward by the Budget Finance Committee last hour. We can take them individually Monday night, or we can take them all together, if that's the will of the body. What I would like to do is ask for it to take them all together. Unless someone has objections to one or would like a separate vote on it, ask for it to be pulled, then we will consider it separately. Sorry, I told y'all. Is there any question on any of the budgets? I mean, but
Not one mentioned, one is on it on.
We did add one, the last one that we had there was on the sound equipment, they did put a four house, it's one that we added. The last one. Any questions on this, I won't be able to go over all of them, I will. I'll try to get out of
Well, first one, board budget.
Budget finance approved all of them, sent forward for the full body, but if there was any questions on any of them, I'd like for us to be able to answer them. Might have talked over that last
My talked over that last one that was added, that's, that is, okay.
We added, uh, CA one oh one day twenty-six. This is for seventy-two thousand dollars. This is used in local government support funding, this is one of the allowed use of, of that money. And this will be to equip the second floor courtroom where we're at right now, with microphones, uh, cameras, speaker system. And, uh, also it's a kind of a plus on it's elect finance voting, uh, that list of equipment. This came through, uh, communications committee's been working on this for about two years now. And, uh, we've had previous bids that were quite a bit more than this. Uh, went back to the drawing board, made a table, I guess, we all missed or did contact as a, uh, election chair. And they brought a proposal to us, they're on the government bid, uh, if I change the BSA, we can take the bid directly. And, uh, that's basically what it is. It will improve our meetings, it will improve the sound for the people at home and the ones that are out in the, uh, in, in the, uh, as well. Mr. Gou, you wanna expand on any?
Uh, any part of that, I think it's, as, as I said, certainly it's gonna benefit in our public awareness of where we are and our transparency of what's going on. I think it's certainly benefiting our hearing, uh, of what's going on in those spaces. Um, I love the opportunity that we have for, uh, a better, uh, a better briefing of our program. If you ask anybody, I love the option of having, uh, of having, uh, recorded meetings and pieces they can look at. But just like having the, uh, the meetings and, and more transparent and better quality will certainly benefit our program. Try to go more on that?
You have any questions, Gou? I'd say this is not new to us, we've been, we've been talking this for months and months and months and trying to get a handle on it and, uh, find the best system to address our needs now and into the future. And we really feel like that we found one. And, uh, I think it was unanimous though on the, uh, communications committee and also unanimous though on budget finance, the same was for it.
And not only was it unanimous though on those, it actually was, uh, brought up by members of the public that are in our, in our committee, on, on that committee that were the, uh, the initial motion and the second were actually members of our vote, and I appreciate that. I really glad to see that they're involved and they saw a need in this work. That, that, in my opinion, I was, I was really thankful that we were able to see that.
Right? Do you think we want to take all of these next Monday night together? And like I say, when I call for them, if there's one that you'd like pulled out, you'll be ready to have and say, I'd like to pull out with different ones, we'll buy them and sell them. If not, we'll do these all together, that's okay. Most of them are just monies in and out, or some insurance recovery monies, things of that nature, moving from one line item to another. Probably this is the only one that would be a consequence. No worries, uh, Rita has any, if she has some with the last minute, she'll, she'll let us know right now, and I don't think we have any. Uh, we do. We have, uh, Mark, Mark Big Stevens. Seven four. Zach Taylor, with Don Ho Taylor and Taylor. Cassandra Foray of Mid-Cumberland Community Action Agency. Demacia Williams. Uh, Christie Carter. John Schoenberger. Ashley Van Dyke. And there's another one here, but it doesn't have one name. Let's see, looks like we'll have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, of course it is. And there might be one here. I'll make sure that when we go over the agenda, we'll make sure we add those names. That will conclude our business Monday night, uh, any other business, Commissioner? Mayor, do you have any other business, anything else to comment on? Public, any comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Wallace makes a motion to adjourn. John, second, all in favor, let's leave. Thank you for putting up in my call.